Good evening, everyone, and welcome to USD 305 Board Meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Hardy, are there any additions or corrections?
Madam President, there are no additions or corrections to the agenda.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. I don't believe we have any recognitions or presentations this evening. So I'll move to approval of consent agenda items, and that includes minutes of the September 25th, 2018, regular meeting, personnel report, financial reports, which includes September bills list, and September bond bills list, the bond budget summary, and approve the copy paper bid to Western BRW Paper Company in the amount of forty-three thousand, three hundred, forty-four dollars for the purchase of sixteen thousand, eight hundred reams of eight and a half by eleven white copy paper. Do I have motion to approve the consent agenda item? Emma?
Emma Doherty, I approve the consent agenda item as presented.
Second?
Second.
And second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Moving on to public forum, this is the time when anyone in the audience, if they would like to come forward and address the board, may do so now. I see no one coming forward, so we'll move to the action agenda. Central High FFA Out-of-State Field Trip with Brooke Petty.
Good evening. I'm here.
You go to the mic.
I am so sorry.
You're not going to get away with that.
Well, thank you for seeing me tonight. I'm here to ask permission to take six of our active FFA members to Indianapolis, Indiana, for the 91st National FFA Convention. These students have participated for the last several of the years in fundraisers, district competitions, and community activities. This is a phenomenal opportunity for them to get to experience a huge Career and College Expo, leadership and personal development workshops, explore career opportunities available in the Ag Food and Natural Resources Pathway, network with other high school students with common interests, and I can't say enough positive things about this experience that I would really love for them to be able to participate in.
Okay. Are there any questions or discussion? Anne?
I was just interested in hearing, have they done this before? Is it every year, or is it every other year?
They, this is my fourth year at Central, and we've not gone since I have been here, but it is my understanding that Mr. Andrews used to go every other year, so.
Any others? Do I have a motion? Gary?
I move we approve the Central High FFA trip to Indianapolis, Indiana on October 24th through October 27th, 2018, as presented.
Second?
Second.
Anne? We have a motion and a second, a chance for further questions or discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda is to receive fiscal year 18 audit from Varney and Associates with Michelle Crowe.
I am Michelle Crowe. I'm one of the owners at Varney and Associates who did your audit this year, and I'm the one that was responsible for the overall for the audit. We had five members of our staff that were here at various times during the week of August 13th onsite doing the actual field work. You should have in front of you two documents, a letter that's about three pages long, and then the thick bay on financial statements. And so I'm going to start out going through the letter, and then I'll switch to the financial statements, and I'm just going to point out some high points on them, but feel free to ask any questions or stop me at any point if you have any questions, and I'd be glad to answer those. So the letter, we call it communications letter, and what it is, is there's certain items that as auditors, we're required to communicate to you as a group that's responsible for overseeing the district's audit. And so on the first page, probably the most significant thing I would say on that page is at the bottom, where it talks about significant accounting policies. If you have any changes in your policy, any new policies or any significant changes to the ones that you had in place, those would be presented on that page, and you did not have any either new policies that were adopted this year or significant changes to your accounting policies. When you go to the second page, at the top, it starts to talk about significant accounting estimates, and your financial statements are presented on a statutory or regulatory basis of accounting that's allowed under the Kansas statutes. That's basically a cash basis of accounting. So you don't have a lot of estimates in your financial statements, but you do have one that's fairly significant, and that's your encumbrances. And what encumbrances are, is there are purchase commitments for things that are charged against the budget for fiscal year 2018. So that's the most significant estimate that's within your financial statements. You also have some things that are considered significant disclosures within the notes of the financial statements, and the most significant disclosure would be no I in regards to pension plans, which would be capers, not really any changes in the disclosure from the way it was presented in the prior year, other than just updating the numbers, but just something to keep in mind is that it presents the actuarial calculation of the unfunded pension liability, and your statements are as of June 30th, 2018, but the numbers that capers present are a year behind. So those numbers that you'll see in there are as of June 30th, 2017. And that number's not booked on your financial statements, it's just something that you have to disclose in the footnotes, so really just something more for informational purposes. As you go down the page, it mentions fraud. We are required to do testing and to look for fraud when we're doing our procedures, but I'm glad to be able to report that we didn't find any this year, so. I'm always glad when I can say that. And then at the bottom of the page, bottom page two and the top of page three are uncorrected and corrected misstatements. If when we're doing our testing, we find anything, maybe an error or anything that's misreported, we would provide that information in here, but we did not find any misstatements that were either corrected or uncorrected this year. And then the final thing that I wanted to mention was on page three, under management disagreement or disagreements with management, and we did not have any disagreements with Are there any questions on the communications letter? So if you want to look at the bayon document, the financial statements, and if you'll look right behind the table of contents, there's a letter that's on our letterhead, and there are actually three letters within this document, three auditors' reports, the one at the front, and then there's two more at the back. The auditors' reports are really our part of the audit, everything else in there, your staff prepares. And so we prepare the letters, and then we audit or we verify the information that's in the rest of the document. There's several things in that first auditor's report to make you aware of. The first, it talks about the reporting basis that, as I mentioned earlier, that we're reporting on the regulatory basis of accounting, basically a cash basis rather than under the general accounting standards. It also talks about governmental auditing standards, which we do follow for your audit. You do have a lot of federal funding that falls under those standards, so we do do some extra procedures related to governmental auditing standards. And it talks about a schedule that's at the back called Schedule for Expenditures of Federal Awards, and that has to do with your compliance with the federal funding that you receive. But overall, probably the most important paragraph in that whole, those whole three pages is our opinion, and we do say that the statements are fairly presented on the regulatory basis. So I just kind of like said, it's kind of like getting a clean bill of health, that's what you want to hear. The next page is the financial statement, and it just kind of shows the cash activity, kind of where you started out by each fund, and then your revenues, your receipts, and your expenditures to come to where you were at at the end of the year. And then behind that are footnotes, there's several pages of various footnotes. This year, there weren't any new footnotes added, so everything that's in there is just basically the same information that would have been in there last year if you wanted to compare the two. They're just updated for the new information that's occurred for the current year. And then the last part in there that I would draw your attention to is on page 53, and it's where it lists all of the federal expenditures that you had during the year. And I point that out because it's a pretty significant number. You had over fourteen million dollars of expenditures for fiscal year 2018, and that number is very similar to where you were at the year before. We do do a federal compliance audit in accordance with, under uniform guidance, which is something that the Office of Management and Budget sends out guidelines for what we have to do to audit those programs. And basically, any of those programs that you see on there that expended over seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, they have to be audited at least once within a three-year cycle. So they're not going to get audited every year, but they will be audited fairly recently on compliance matters. We also have to test at least forty percent of that total, so at least forty percent of that fourteen million dollars, we audited those programs this year. And there were two programs that we audited, and they were the Child Nutrition Cluster, which is the school lunch program, and then also the Special Education Cluster. And when we do that, it's compliance testing, so it's looking for different requirements under those grants, not always necessarily dollars. You know, you think of financial statement audit, we're just looking at the numbers, but we actually look at some applications and things like that under the school lunch program, so we're looking beyond just the numbers for some of that compliance work. And I'm glad to be able to report that we did not have any findings in any of the federal award testing that we did either. In conclusion, I'd like to compliment Lisa and Crystal and the rest of their staff. They do a very good job of responding to our questions and getting us the information that we request, and they do so very kindly, which we really appreciate, because that helps us to be able to get things wrapped up in a timely manner, and we just appreciate all their efforts. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any questions at all. Do I have a motion to receive the audit?
Madam President, I move that we receive the audit for fiscal year 2018 as presented.
Second? Anne?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you very much. And another special thank you, Lisa, for all the work that you do in counting every penny for us. Not everybody gets to play with that much money. Next on our agenda is appointment of the 2018 KASB delegate and alternate. Dr. Hardy, do you have anything to say, or could I go ahead and make a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Just to note that every year, the KASB Delegate Assembly meets, usually as a part of the KASB Convention, and each year, each individual Board of Education appoints a delegate who will reflect the wishes of the Board on possible rule changes and stands by the Delegate Assembly. And we're very fortunate that we have our Board that is all in and is willing to be a part, and I think we're respected for that. So I know that Board Member Anne would like to have that role again, and Board Member Jim, Board Member Jim said he would be honored to be the alternate.
Okay. I would like to make that a motion, that we have Anne as our delegate, and if she is unable to be there, then Jim, you're the alternate, or sit beside her and support her, and that'll make three of us in the room then at the convention, which would be great. Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, second motion, Madam President.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you, both of you. Next on action agendas, set a special meeting for the Superintendent Search. Do I have a motion on that? First, Dr. Hardy, explain what's going on.
Just a reminder, of course, part of the effort when the Board of Education approved KASB to be the search organization, that they are ready to have their first meeting, and I know the Board's been doing a little bit of homework on that leading up to it, and they have asked if our Board could meet on Monday, October 15th at 5:00 p.m., which would be in the Schmidt Room, to talk about the next steps.
Do I have a motion for that? Anne?
Madam President, I move that we set a special meeting on Monday, October 15th, 2018, beginning at 5:00 at the District Office in the Schmidt Room as presented.
Thank you. Second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes.
If we have another meeting about, I'm sure we'll talk about this later, but at the end of the month after the focus groups, we don't have another meeting between now and then to set a special meeting date.
We don't have to. I notice the media in time, so it's okay.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was a quick answer. Okay. Next on our agenda is Board Policy with Erin Wright.
Good evening. So in your packet, you have the Board Policies. This is the second reading of these tonight as required by Board Policy. They remain largely the same as they were presented to you at the September 25th meeting, with one change, which is noted to the new whistleblower policy DEA. We clarified some and straightened up some carryover language that was misplaced, but other than that, it's what was presented to you before, and student and I were recommending that you approve the following, the Board Policies included in your packet as presented.
Do I have a motion? Gary?
Madam President, I move we approve the Board Policies on second reading as presented.
Do I have a second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Any discussion at all? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great. Next on our agenda is Board, sorry, Discussion Agenda, and seeing none, I'll move on to School Board Reports and upcoming dates of importance. Thursday, October 25th, we do have a legislative forum at the Chamber Annex at 6:30 p.m. Thursday, November 8th, is Smoky Hill Education Service Center Legislative Luncheon at 10:00 a.m., and November 30th through December 2nd is Kansas Association of School Boards Annual Convention in Overland Park, where we will all be. And Gary?
I attended the Opportunity Now Open House this week. It was very nice. I got a very good tour from a couple of their students. It was nice to get to know them a little bit and to see their employees, and I ended up bidding on and winning two dozen muffins. Sorry to say they're all gone. And then I also spoke on behalf of the Education Foundation yesterday morning to the central faculty. I was preceding some other guy named Hardy who was speaking right after me.
You did a good job of warming up the crowd.
But then put me first for good reason, to warm up the crowd for you. Anyway, and that was nice to be able to talk to them. They've warmly received information about the Education Foundation.
Jim?
At the Parks and Rec Advisory Board Meeting, also attended the KASB Regional Meeting in McPherson, several other Board Members in the Opportunity Now Open House, then the Heartland Policy Council Meeting. Something that I brought from that meeting that I wanted to share, from the Heartland Meeting, you know, there's a lot of grants that are funding that program, and part of that grant is in-kind support. And something that really stuck out to me is the parents, when they go and they work in the schools and they're doing activities that are not just related to their child, but to support the classroom and the school, that is counted as in-kind and supports that federal grant money that's there. Last year, they reported over a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of in-kind funds because of the activities the parents were doing in the schools. I thought that that was pretty impressive, seeing that come from that school and support of that system.
Thank you, Jim. Anne?
I attended the Smoky Hill Education Service Center Cabinet Meeting. I attended the Opportunity Now Open House and got a tour from A.J. I didn't get A.J.'s last name, but he did a good job. I also attended the KASB Regional Meeting in McPherson, and I want to emphasize, as I emphasized there, that we should all be registered to vote, and the deadline for registering is a week from today, Tuesday, October 16th. If you want to vote in the general election, which is very important this year, be sure to register to vote, and that you can go to ksvotes.org and do that on your cell phone or on your computer. One thing that I just learned before I came here tonight was that the legislative forum on October 25th, which is on our list of important dates, is somewhat in question because the League of Women Voters has heard that J.R. Clay's may not be attending, and the only race in that forum is J.R. Clay's and Jarrett Morris, so there's some question about whether that's going to happen. I don't know the final outcome of that issue right now, but keep your ears open. Thank you, that's all.
Okay. Thank you. Emma?
I too attended the Fall Regional Meeting in McPherson and discussion of legislative issues in school safety. I also would like to remind everybody that October 8th through the 14th is the Kansas Anti-Bullying Week, and it's designated by the State Board of Education, and this allows school officials across Kansas to observe the week as an opportunity to create awareness and address the harm of bullying in the schools.
Carol?
Dr. Hardy and I met with NEA Salina Executive Officers on September 27th, and we discussed the following topics, the process for superintendent selection. Teachers really want to be fully involved in focus groups and whatever other meetings we might come up with. We also talked about the Equity Council and Benefits Committee, got an update on the work of both of those committees. There was a very lengthy discussion of the current leave policy, which was actually much too complicated to replicate here. And another thing to put on your calendars, an invitation from NEA to attend the Master Teacher Celebration to be held on November 8th, 4:00 South High School. I too attended the Opportunity Now Open House, had a delightful time seeing the garden with Chloe, and had a really good conversation at the table with Wesley. They were both excellent hosts, and I too apparently took home a basket much like Anne's with cookies, breads, and homemade jellies. Very nice. Do you know, does anyone know if there, is there a possibility that they might make those up for holidays?
I would guess that exceptional caterers would be willing to do that.
That's just, they're so lovely, they would make a marvelous gift. Also attended the KASB Regional Meeting in McPherson. One of the things that struck me as quite valuable was when the school board president from MAC talked about his five-year-old kindergarten grandson who was dealing with social contracts in his class. Now, that's not the Hobbesian concept, we can sort of, you know, dispense with that at the moment, but it's basically the golden rule. What they do is get the little guys and gals together to talk about how we want to behave toward one another, how we want to be treated, and then how would we deal with anything that might be a deviation from those standards. And it's really cool that these little bitty kids are working on that, I think. And I also, and Emma did as well, attended the wedding of Ramona Newsom, who recently served on this Board, and I'm sure those of us who served with her wish her and her new husband great joy.
I attended the LIFT Supper honoring all of the LIFT recipients. The LIFT program is funded by Salina Education Foundation, and I am a trustee on that. It was very well attended. I might, the very first LIFT recipient was there, so it's kind of something, I think once a year, that she's going to try to get everybody together so they can get to know each other, see who they are, and have conversations in that venue. I toured South High School with Dr. Watson, who's the Commissioner of Education, and I'm getting to know that building rather well, so I think I could hire out as a tour guide. If you need a tour guide, I even know where the coffee is, so. But that was, I think he was very pleased with what Salina schools have done at South High. I also attended the KASB Fall Regional Five Meeting at the Cedars in McPherson, and that's always a great time to be together and get acquainted with everybody, and we mixed and mingled and got to meet some new faces, so that was on my agenda this last few weeks. So, Dr. Hardy, we're ready for the Superintendent's Report.
I was invited, had the honor to attend the Kansas Wesleyan University Trustees Meeting, and the theme for that meeting was to ask nonprofits and, of course, USD 305 to come and visit and share about the collaboration that we have, and it was a long list. It was really nice to share so many things. Of course, we really gave them huge kudos on their student-teacher preparatory program. They do a very nice job, and they're sending us some real great folks, and we shared we will take all we can get. But it was really, I think what they were asked, the end in mind was that the trustees had an opportunity to see that Kansas Wesleyan University is really immersed in Salina, and we're a big part of that. I noticed you have your buttons on, thank you for that. This is in a collaboration with NEA Salina, and we are working with them to get out the vote, and I just want to share, they've been working very hard on this. I have to give them a big pat on the back. They're visiting with all their members, they're sharing with other staff members, we're doing some things together, and it's just really, it's a great opportunity for us to work together on one theme, and I have to really compliment their folks. So I think that's really important. Let's see. Talking about the tours, I also gave one of the candidates, Jarrett Morris, the tour of South, and that's kind of fun, just like you, Nedra. It's getting to the point that almost, can you know, do it with my eyes shut, not, one thing they go, one thing I have to say, when we get to the gym, they always want to see the original parts of the building.
Right.
And you know, some of the folks that have gone through there, there's not much left, so you take them to the gym and the natatorium, and I think that, is that it from the original building, the gym and the natatorium?
Original, original.
Original, original?
And then stage two would be the little theater, the drum, well, not little theater anymore, it's the big theater.
Yeah. So it's kind of fun to see folks walk around, and there was one person that had not been in that building since they graduated, like, and they were one of the first classes, and they're always just amazed. And they give it huge compliments. They would take it over their previous school, is what I should, probably the best thing I could say about that. One of the joys about being the superintendent is I get to go out and visit with our students and staff. At this time, I'm going around to all the attendance centers and meeting with the staffs and talking to them about Equity Council. It's very well received, especially when you share what the mission is, that we want all of our students to have a full and successful experience in USD 305, and everybody nods their head because they all feel the same way, and then I affirm that that's what Equity Council is all about. And the difference is that teachers and administrators have so many things to do, but the Equity Council's single mission is to fulfill that dream for all of our students, and so that really makes sense to people. The other thing we're doing, Lisa Peters and I are visiting all the site councils, and you know, here's how we kind of start the conversation. The President does, you know, the State of the Union, the Governor does the State of the State, but we get to come and do the State of the District. And it's always a nice audience, you know, they're very glad to see us and learn about the different things that are going on. And here's a few statistics. I like to share statistics with you. Here's a few things that I thought you might appreciate, that Dr. Watson- Here's a few things that I thought you might appreciate that Dr. Watson and Dale Dennis have been sharing with us. That this, and this is another reason why we should be so appreciative to have Kansas Wesleyan right here in our community. This will be the smallest class ever to come out of Kansas universities and colleges that are going to be student-teacher, student teaching and become teachers. That this is the smallest that they can remember, and that is significant for us. The fact that we have all these student-teachers coming into our buildings, we fall in love with them, they fall in love with us, and they stay. So that is very important. The other thing that we've been talking about, and it's a theme through all districts, and I went to a meeting where they discussed this, they talked about, you know, the number of students that we're receiving at such a young age that are struggling with school in very, very serious ways. And one thing they talked about, that this, they think this is offshoot of the opiate crisis. You know, the use of medications or drugs, just illegal drugs is what they are, and that we're seeing that through the kids that are coming through, the children that are born from those parents. And there's trying to make a link, some type of link to autism with that. So I thought that was really interesting. But we're seeing in our district, we're not an anomaly. When the superintendents meet, that is one of the things that come up, is seeing students at such young ages struggle so badly. The other thing, this is interesting, talking about Generation Z. That is the students that we have in school now, that's Z. They were talking about 59% of them prefer YouTube to textbooks. I thought that was interesting, but I thought this was still, the main choice is they would still prefer to have an in-person teacher. So sometimes we think they just all want to go, you know, get on their computers and learn online, but the preference still is to have in-person teachers. But if they had a choice between YouTube and textbooks, they would take YouTube. This is, I thought this is a really pat on the back for our public schools. 99% of America is literate. Isn't that huge? 99% of, except for, you know, K-1, they're not literate yet. But that's what they said, and it's also said 99%, 90% of U.S. students attend public schools. So that is really a big deal that we have that as our, as our mission. And just the last couple of things, you know, we've been talking about post-secondary, how important that is. I went to a presentation by our tech college president here in town, and here's what he shared. The Salina Area Tech College has a 98.3% job placement. That is impressive. 95% of their tech grads stay in Kansas, and 82% of the Salina Area Tech College graduates stay in Salina.
Wow.
So that is encouraging. So I think some of that is just really good news, that we're doing some amazing things. But we also have a lot of challenges. And fortunately, we have the right people in the right places to face those challenges. Madam President, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda is, we do need an executive session for personnel. Could I have a motion? How much time?
Can we start with 10? Would that be okay?
10 minutes? Okay. Just 20 till. All right.
That's when you want to go into it?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 20 minutes until 6:00. For 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because of this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 5:50 in the Board Conference Room.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. This part of the meeting is adjourned, and if you would like to stay, you certainly can in this room. Thank you for being here this evening.